Vice Mayor staffs ready when you are.
All right, thank you very much. Let's call this meeting to order. Would you take role and establish a quorum for us, please, Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloe?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
I'm here and have an unstable internet connection, so I won't be on video for a little bit here.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And we expect Mayor Steinberg momentarily.
All right, great. Thanks, Madam Clerk. This is the Sacramento City Council meeting as the Housing Authority on March 8th, the International Day of the Woman. So let me just first say, let's celebrate that. My council colleagues, Vang and Valenzuela, I'm very glad you're both here. The three of us have some celebration items planned for later in the month, but let's go ahead and get this agenda started for now, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Ashby, I could start with the land acknowledgement and then Councilmember Valenzuela can do the pledge of allegiance.
I think that sounds great. I think we lost our clerk there for a second. If you would help us out, that would be great. Councilmember Vang?
Okay, thank you. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous peoples and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin and Win Two peoples, and the people of the Walton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. I'll now pass it to Councilwoman Valenzuela.
Thank you. Please salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Nice, smooth start. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first item?
Thank you. Our first item is a public hearing, item number one, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing and approval of tax-exempt bonds and loan commitment funds to the Marisol Village, Block D project.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Dozier, is a member of your staff presenting on this item?
Yes, this is a presentation on Marisol Village, one of our most exciting projects that we have, and Victoria-
Yes, congratulations, Ms. Dozier, on finding so much gap funding here at the end. You're doing amazing work.
And that's what this is all about. So Victoria's gonna do the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff, members of the public. I'm going to give a brief update on the Marisol Village redevelopment project and then submit a request for your approval of funding for Block D of the project. So Marisol Village is a group of five blocks on the main site, A, B, C, D, E. Blocks A, B, C are fully funded, and Block E is fully funded. Today, we're gonna ask for approval of the gap funds needed to complete Block D. That is the final phase, Phase Four, of the project that remains to be funded. The park is not only funded, the park is constructed, the community garden is constructed, all of the public improvements are 100% complete. So this is, I dare say, the final phase that needs funding of the Marisol Village project.
Very good.
Some quick photos, just to share for anybody who has not driven by. Here's a photo of Block A under construction, looking across the Park Vista. Here's a quick photo of Block E. This is the block that faces 12th Street. Of the exterior of the building has been painted, not yet landscaped, and the beautiful interior kitchens. Here is the community park. The grass is green, the playground is completed. We have a phenomenally attractive entry sign at the corner of the main park corner. We've had real great success with community events and community engagement at Marisol Village. This is a tree planting event was held in October. We had, as you see, children come out, families come out. We planted 48 trees in the park in cooperation with the Sacramento Tree Foundation. We have the community garden completed and ready for planting. On April 23rd, we'll be having our first community planting event. The seedlings are somewhere now in little pots, ready to be transplanted, and we will be starting the first year's garden in April. Another component of our community engagement work, which is also funded through the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, are community murals. And these have been excellent examples of collaborative art. Community members have come out and expressed artistic ideas and thoughts. They have been captured. Here is the mural on the Loaves and Fishes Building. Here is the mural on the Commerce Printing Building. I'm particularly pleased with the outcome. I don't have a photo of the 12th Street as you drive over the, under the railroad underpass on 12th Street. There's a beautiful mural on both sides of the street. The next mural to be installed will be on the Globe Mills Building that will be going on the wall by the end of March. And then we will also have a new mural in April at the community garden. So the topic of tonight's action is Block D funding. I did an overview here, rounded numbers of the project funding for this Phase Four. It's 116 units. The total development cost is $62 million. And really want to highlight first that the first two lines, $28 million in tax credit equity, $13 million in a permanent loan, those are private sources. So there is a lot of public money in this project, but 2/3 of the total funding is in fact private. And the public funds are the critical 1/3 that make the project competitive at the state level. The city housing fund request for $10 million is made up of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 different sources. $3.3 million of the local, permanent local housing allocation, $3 million of Housing Authority funds, $1.4 million of mixed income funds, $1.4 million of the SHRA-held Housing Trust Fund, and $900,000 of HOPWA, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. That's a special funding set aside for that purpose. So that together comes to $10 million. The county tomorrow will be asked to approve a $5 million commitment. And together with the previously committed CNI funds, and then a new request to the state Mixed Income Program, we will have secured the full $62 million. We do still need to go through the competitive bond and tax credit allocation process, which will be, not be announced until June, but we're in really good shape to succeed in that, in that round because of these local funds committed. So I will also mention that this, today is the TEFRA hearing, the Public Process for Tax-Exempt Bonds. The local bonds would be the backup plan if the CalHFA does not issue the tax-exempt bonds.
Got it. Very good. Is this the last slide in your presentation?
One quick slide, always looking ahead. Our first residents will be moving in, by the end of April. That will occupy the first 123 units. The Block C construction will start in June or July. Tenants will move back into Block A in the fall. The community rooms will open. The light rail station construction will begin all by the end of 2022. And if we are successful with this Block T request, we will also start construction for Block D. It will be a busy year.
Yeah, it looks like it.
In 2024, we will wrap it all up.
Congratulations. This is an amazing timeline. No doubt, my colleagues here have their hands up, but I want to just say to you, this is what SHRA does best. Good job. I mean, just finding the funding sources, weaving them together, and getting them where you need. And then I would like to personally just say thank you to the county for putting some of their R funds. And I, I know that Supervisor Serna was the champion of that effort, and I want to thank him and thank the county for supporting him and helping us get this done. Both council members, Harris and Valenzuela, have a special spot in their heart for this. So Councilmember Valenzuela, go ahead.
And Councilmember Harris?
Sure. But everyone, I didn't quite have access till after you were both up there, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Is there any public comment?
Yes, I do have, I do have one hand raised. Did you want to take?
Why don't we take public comment?
Okay.
Well, let's just open the public hearing, hear the comment, and then I'll make my comments.
All right, that sounds great. Madam Clerk, we'll take that caller.
Perfect. It's Daphne.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing today? It sounds like you're doing really good work in that area. I would really love to see that type of effort being done in the South area as well. And it's a wonderful thing that you're able to come up with $62 million. It's just, it would be wonderful if that kind of effort could be done in our area as well. But good job.
Thank you, Daphne. We'll keep trying. We'll keep trying. It won't be the last one. All right, Councilmember Harris, go right ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Listen, to SHRA, I just want to say, you've really pulled a rabbit out of your hat this time. You know, from the, from the day I was elected, we started chasing the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative grant. And so in my entire tenure on the council, this project has been ongoing. It's been a really heavy lift for SHRA, but you have prevailed. I mean, you actually got this done. My hat is off to McCormick Baron Salazar. They've been great to work with. Very complicated project, and it's a wonderful improvement for the River District. Listen, as far as the funding this time to fill the gap, did you, I don't think you left a stone unturned. I've never seen this many funding sources for any project. In fact, I got 20 bucks in my wallet, if that'll help. You know, I'm really proud of what you were able to do. I know that Block D has left you with a couple of sleepless nights. This is not an easy thing to pull off, and I'm very pleased with the results. I can't wait to see the residents return. And it's super exciting. So the public hearing is already open. I'd like to close it and move all of the council recommendation.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. You've been a great ambassador for this project. I'm gonna go ahead and hand it to Councilmember Valenzuela, and then I believe our mayor has joined us, so I will-
No, please.
-hand the reins of the meeting back over to him.
No, finish the item, please, Vice Mayor, under your gavel. Thank you.
All right, you got it. Go ahead, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And yeah, echoing Councilmember Harris's comments, I had a chance to drive around and see the most recent work when I was out with Jenna Abbott, the Executive Director for the River District the other day. It's beautiful. I mean, you really give a feeling of community when you drive through that space, and I just can't wait to see it all come to fruition. So echoing the accolades, which are very well deserved and earned in this, in this case, and second the motion before the council, thank you all.
I don't see any other hands raised. Colleagues, any other comments? Councilmember Jennings?
Yeah, I think you, I think you, you know, everyone has said it all, and great teamwork, great leadership from Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Valenzuela. An incredible job by Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And it's been said already, as far as pulling the dollars together and making the project something that we all will be proud of for many years to come. And I too can't wait to see the residents come back and to see the smiles on their faces from what they left to what they now are coming back to. So, great job. Really proud to be a part of this effort and be a part of this city.
I just, I just have to say thank you as well. Congratulations. This has been a massive undertaking. And Michelle and your team, you know, it's the value of persistence, obviously never giving up, and knowing what it means for many, many people and many, many families to be able to live in quality, affordable housing. And so, thanks. Thank you.
Absolutely. I can, on International Women's Day, Ms. Dozier, shining example. Way to bring it across the finish line for all of us. So proud of you, but for the record, I never had a doubt. Good job. All right, it has been moved by Councilmember Harris, and the public comment closed and seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela. Madam Clerk, let's give the final funding we need here to Ms. Dozier's project.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
That's it, Mayor. Hand it back to you for this next item.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. This is the rental assistance. Somebody is, there's a lot of background noise. I don't know what it is.
Where's my presentation?
Somebody can mute yourself. All right. Item two, this is the rental assistance demonstration program update. Go ahead, please.
So the rental assistance demonstration program, really, if you kind of back up a little bit, we in 2007 put together asset repositioning strategy for all of our public housing. And Marisol was a part of that asset repositioning, looking at our large public housing developments and how we would really renovate them. So the rental assistance demonstration program is another tool that we are using to renovate the entire portfolio of public housing in the city and the county. And we're systematically moving through our inventory, so we want to give you an update in terms of what's to come, the work that we've done already, and how we see it continuing to move along. Are you ready? Okay.
Sorry, we're just working through some technical difficulties here. Okay. All right. Hi, everybody. Good afternoon. My name is Mark Hamilton. I am the Director of RAD and Maintenance here at the, at the Housing Authority. I'm here to present to you just a quick update on our RAD program, which is our rental assistance demonstration program that Michelle just spoke of. Just some quick key background and features of the program. This was introduced by HUD back in 2012 to help address $26 billion in national, in a nationwide backlog of deferred maintenance throughout the public housing inventory. We jumped on board with RAD back in 2019 and launched our RAD pilot project, where we tackled 124 units spread across both the city and the county. We looked at a total development cost of $25.3 million. I'm proud to say that we resolved that scattered site project July 31st, 2021. We actually jumped into our next project, which is our Central City One project that covers Edgewater and our Capitol Terrace Building. We've actually just started construction last month. We're anticipating in having this rehabilitation close by November 17th, 2022, at a total development cost of $66.4 million. All the financing has been secured. We're well on our way for, through the first phase of construction. Coming up next, we'll have our Central City Two and Central City Three projects coming along in the pipeline with a starting pre-development on Central City Two sometime next year and looking to resolve construction by mid to late 2024. Our future projects include other public housing apps or asset management projects. They include Marina Vista, our Meadow Commons, Sun River, Mill, Rio Garden, Oak Park, Point Lagoon, and Alder Grove communities. As you can see, we have quite a busy development slate over the next 10 plus years. This is not set in stone. As we kind of encounter new challenges and obstacles such as financing, this timeline may be altered. And then I just wanted to share a few pictures. This is our Perry Avenue property, part of our RAD pilot project. This is a before shot. And here's the work that we performed at the project, brand-new exteriors, new paint, new doors, new windows, did the works here. New interiors, so brand-new flooring, cabinets, countertops. More interior shots. We replaced everything in the bathroom in these units. Our Folsom Boulevard project. All, so we did replace windows here, did a bit of touch-up on the paint, brand-new exteriors, so brand-new country, countertops, appliances here, new bathrooms. And you'll see the same theme kind of throughout the RAD pilot project, where we really did address the exteriors and all of the interiors, where we replaced anything and everything that had an immediate need to be replaced. Our Alder Grove Boulevard property, here, brand-new exterior, brand-new interiors. And our El Perizo property, where we basically gave the whole property a brand-new facelift. And interior improvements here. Willorga was our last project to be completed as part of RAD pilot. Brand-new interiors here. And this is our Central City One project. So these are in-progress photos. These are the properties as they are now. This is at 1820 Capitol. Some of the interior shots of what it looks like now. Demolition in progress. And here's a proposal of what the building will look like once it's completed. So it's gonna, gonna look completely different than what it looks like now. 626, you guys may recognize this. This is also where our Housing Choice voucher department is housed. So we will be actually doing improvements to the units and to the major building systems in this building. Some of the common areas. Current shots of the interior units. And that concludes my presentation.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have public testimony on this important item?
I have no hands raised to make comments on this item.
Okay, then let's, let's go to the members of the City Council. City Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, SHRA team, for the update on this item. I know when the RAD program started, I think one of the big concerns from advocates was about relocation during repairs and like returning of tenants. So could you talk a little bit about how you've seen that work? Where are folks going when these repairs are coming online? How many folks are coming back that, you know, were asked to, needed to leave the premises for repairs, that sort of thing?
Sure thing. For RAD pilot, we were looking at a relocation period of about six weeks, where we were relocating tenants to other public housing units as their units were being worked on. We had 100% comeback to the property for, for that project. For Central City One, we're doing things a little bit differently. We're not utilizing public housing resources to relocate the tenants. We're actually placing residents in extended stay hotels. And the feedback that we've gotten so far from the tenants is that it's like a mini-vacation. We're in our first phase, you know, they have access to a swimming pool, continental breakfast every day, very large rooms that they're staying at. We've heard from a few that they would prefer to stay there, but we tell them to keep an open mind, and their, their units will be ready here very shortly. But we're not looking at an extended period of time for the tenants to be displaced. We're looking at maybe eight, eight to 12 weeks tops. For some of the ADA units, where it requires a bit more work, they may be out for a couple of months, but we have a great relocation team that's working with them and staying in connection with our tenants through their displacement.
That's excellent to hear. Thank you. I was, I went on mute to chuckle a little bit. This feels like a vacation. I'm sure that must be a nice little break. And can you talk a little bit just about how properties, because I get questions about how properties were selected for the RAD pilot and sort of how SHRA looked at your inventory to prioritize these, these projects for the pilot?
Sure. So RAD pilot, those properties were selected as kind of low-hanging fruit. They were really designed for us to kind of get our feet wet with the whole RAD process. It was a new experience for our agency. And if you look at the properties that were involved with that project, it kind of runs the gamut. We have, oh, we have elderly, we have multifamily, we have properties in the city, properties in the county. And that was really the reason why those properties were picked, so that we could get experience working in those kind of different areas. As we kind of go through the pipeline, we kind of worked through where our properties are going to kind of be more expensive. So we're rolling these budgets up. One important thing to note is with these RAD projects, the Housing Authority in partnership with its nonprofit are self-developing these, these projects. So all that money that would go to an external developer are kind of staying in-house, and we're rolling tho, that, those monies into future projects. You'll see that Alder Grove is kind of at the end of the development pipeline, because we've recognized that property as, as kind of needing the most as far as capital investment. And so that, that's, that's the reasoning behind, you know, where the projects are in the timeline.
That makes sense. And I guess my final question, because obviously this pilot began during a previous administration, is just under the Biden administration. If you think this is still the direction we're heading in, if you're hearing anything else, obviously this program came out of some really historic disinvestment and property maintenance funding for, for public housing. And so, I mean, do we think the Biden administration is going to take more of a hybrid approach? Do we think they're going to lean in on the RAD program? I mean, what, I know it's probably tea leaves at this point, because they've got a lot on their plates, but I wonder what you're hearing and seeing in terms of potential changes under this administration?
Well, well, the RAD program has received terrific support from kind of both sides of the House, and it has historically. So even under, even under, from Trump to Biden, we've seen that HUD has continued to kind of champion RAD, and it has the support of, you know, of Congress. We're seeing increased allocations. We're seeing more money going towards RAD than, than ever before. We had considered, as an agency had considered RAD as a strategy previously, but it didn't pencil, because the funding just wasn't there. And 2018 really was a land, like a landmark time, because like we finally saw RAD levels that could support the development of these projects. And as we've kind of moved forward from 2018 on, we've seen kind of more and more kind of go into that allocation, and these projects become more feasible as, as time has kind of gone on. So to answer your question, we've seen solid support across both administrations for the RAD program.
All right. So thank you for the update today. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the work on more projects in the housing in my district. So thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. I don't see anybody else. All right, this is ambitious program, but again, will lead to higher-quality housing for more people, done right, and look forward to it. Let's, is there a motion in a second?
It's on for receiving file, Mayor.
It's a receiving file. I would have voted yes. Let's just, let the record reflect. Okay. Very good. That, that's the agenda for this afternoon, members. Are there council ideas and questions, or Housing Authority ideas and questions? Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two hands raised. The first one is for Daphne.
Yes, I just wanted to make a point of information that the hand did not raise or allow raising on item number two, so I did have questions. If you can place the list back on the screen so we can take a look at it again, that would be helpful. Or if you can post it online where we can see it, that'd be wonderful. There's also some questions I have as far as, again, having those type of projects being done more so in the South area and District Eight, District Five. Not sure how they're selected, but would like to know how we are gonna get categorized into the queue to get these type of projects in our areas. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker's phone number, last four digits, 4366.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert of To the Bay and Back Cheesecake. We just returned from the Bay Area Mayor and City Council, and it probably will be coming out, if not in the Sacramento Observer or somewhere. But our cheesecakes have been endorsed by an international group. I mean, they were wonderful to us. And when I said that we were from Sacramento, Sacramento has a lot of clout, not only in California, because it's the capital, but it has a lot of clout internationally, because California is the fifth-largest economy in the world. And I'm very proud to say that, because I'm a native of Sacramento, specifically Del Paso Heights. And so I wanted to say that also while I was in the Bay Area, I was hearing about Grant High School's basketball team. I hope the mayor and city council give those very deserving teenagers, who I know their parents and grandparents. Del Paso Heights has a lot of deep roots. I don't think people really understand that. And I think they should get an award. They also have- And I think they should get an award. They also have a, a group called the Drum Line. And even when we were in the Bay Area, they were talking about them saying that they were known all over the country. And I read sometimes where they have difficulty getting funding to catch planes and stay in hotels. That should be, that's a shame that they go through that, and they're teenagers. So I hope you look into that, Mayor and City Council. And thank you, Mr. Luloi. Somebody told me the newsletter was out in March. That's, that's impressing me. And if Minty is inside that chamber again, give her a raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Members, if there's nothing else to come before the Housing Authority, we'll reconvene as a full city council. A full city council at 5 o'clock, no close session. So we'll see you all at 5. We are adjourned.